Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the July 6, 2023 Meeting of the Fiscal Management Committee. Just, you know, the most exciting show in the county. And just a little bit of an update, we decided to have this extra meeting of the Fiscal Management Committee in late spring, as we came to the end of the annual operating budget cycle. Because it's no secret that this last operating budget season particularly, capital budget a little bit, but the operating budget definitely, the cycle was a difficult one. But I think with the difficulty came a lot of opportunity. As we moved through the operating budget cycle with three of our five board members going through that process for the first time, and six of the eleven county council members going through that process for the first time. It was really an opportunity to see how we do what we do from a budgeting perspective through fresh eyes. And hear from folks who were going through it on their first go around, things that would help them understand the information presented to them, assess and analyze our budget, look at why we are asking for the things that we're asking for and how we are monitoring and evaluating the work of the school system to make sure that we're spending our money in ways that are best designed to serve our students and families well. So we decided there was a real opportunity here as well to both look a little bit backward to the cycle that was and also focus forward to some of the ways we're going to be using new processes and ways of doing things to both help us operate this very large school system as efficiently as possible, but also make it a more transparent process for all of those of us who are involved in the decision-making processes, but also for the taxpayers who fund our school system. So that's the why of it. And before we get started, I will just do some introductions. I should have started there. Lynn Harris, I am the Chair of the Fiscal Management Committee, and I will turn it to my board colleagues, Ms. Mandrowski.
Hi, Rebecca Smundrowski, District Two.
And Ms. Rivera Oven.
Good afternoon. What is that this Grace Rivera Oven, District One.
And then with our MCPS staff here that will be taking us through this fiscal journey. I'm just looking at my window. So Mr. Riley.
Hello, Rob Riley, Associate Superintendent of Finance.
And Mr. Hull.
Brian Hull, Chief Operating.
Mr. Clausen.
Good afternoon, Tom Clausen, Executive Director of the Office of Finance.
Ms. Burke Strasser.
Good afternoon, MJ Burke Strasser, Supervisor of Internal Audit.
Ms. Eater.
Hello, Claudia Eater, Office of Finance Administrator. Great to be here with you today.
And our board staff, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so just to get started, first item on the agenda is the informational summary from our March 23 meeting. Looking to my colleagues, any questions, edits, comments about that summary? Okay, then moving on. Next item, item three, is getting down to a look at what is our operating budget and why is it structured the way it is? A lot of the comment that we got from people who were analyzing, reviewing the school system's operating budget request this year for the first time went to seeing that MCPS as the largest component of the Montgomery County Government presented its budget documents and explanatory materials in different ways than the other county agencies that the county council members were being asked to review. And so we wanted to talk a little bit about why our budget is created the way it is, reported the way it is, the documents that describe it are the way they are. So I think I am turning it over to Mr. Riley.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Harris. So if you take a look at the agenda, what we're going to be talking about is a few different processes. As Ms. Harris mentioned, we're going to be talking about the budget cycle. But I just kind of want to frame it, the budget cycle is actually one part of our budget to financial reporting cycle. Talking about, a lot of times in finance, we talk about these cycles. So another cycle you might be familiar with is our procure-to-pay cycle. So this is where we, you know, this talks about how we find and approve vendors. It talks about how we issue contracts, purchase orders, invoices, and finally how we pay those vendors. So I'm just using that as an example as our procure-to-pay cycle. And we are, we are actually going to dig into that a little deeper in September. We recently had a review by the Greater City Schools, and we're going to talk about enhancements and improvements that we're going to be making to that procure-to-pay cycle. Another cycle that kind of crosses off this is, is the hire-to-retire cycle. So that's one, that, that one speaks about how we find the best qualified people. And then once we're there on board, how we pay them, how we, that we take care of their benefits, and finally how we set them up for a happy retirement. So that's another cycle. But getting back to our agenda for today. So we're going to be talking about the budget to financial reporting cycle. And as Ms. Harris mentioned, there's some changes that's happened in a few of the areas within that cycle. And we'll get, talk about them in detail in a little bit. If you guys can bring up the current MC, yep, perfect, next slide. So what, well, first of all, what is our budget? So our budget basically is our plan that we, that we work on with the board, superintendent, all of our stakeholders. It tells us how we're going to allocate our limited resources to align with the district priorities and student needs. So basically, it's the plan, how we're going to spend our money, right? So we're legally bound to do two budgets a year. One is the annual operating budget, which, you know, which we're talking about now. And we also do a capital improvements program budget, which according to the state, according to Comer, these are the legal budgets that we do. We do more than that, you know, we do budgets for our food service, we do, we have ten funds that we report on. And we do budgets for actually most of those budgets, but the ones that we have to do legally are these two budgets. Next slide. So, so getting back to why we reported the way we do, so a lot of that, a lot of our reporting requirements for budget come right from Emmett, from the state, right? These are our legal requirements. And one of the things we have to do is presented by state budget categories. So that, that's what we did. And, you know, we did some research back in our, in our library, in our archives, in the office. And we looked, and back in the early seventies, we actually were only presenting by that state category. We weren't presenting it any other way. That's the way we had to do it, and that's the way we did it. But then we realized that, you know, that, that doesn't always benefit our stakeholders and our, our decision makers. So we started somewhere, you know, a few years after that, we started presenting by organization. And this is what we've been doing for many years since then. So we've been producing our organizational budget. And it's actually three different points in time and three separate budgets, basically. We do the superintendent's recommended operating budget, and that's in December. The board does their tentatively adopted budget in February. And then we find out what are, you know, actual dollars that we're going to be getting from our state and from the county. And then we do the board's operating budget, final budget in June, which is, which is actually posted on the website now. So the FY24 operating budget is there, out there for everybody to see. Again, separated by an organizational structure. Next slide, please. And, you know, when I say organizational structure, we organize it by chapters. So you know, when we go through the, the board work sessions, we, we do a couple of chapters at a time. But this is where our departments and our divisions are explaining what's, what's in their budgets. Next slide. And this is from an organizational structure, just this, this, these are the chapters and the, the pieces of our organizational chart that they speak to. As you can see, you know, it's strictly organizational. So if you want any details about what's in particular organizations, it's not readily available in the current way that we do our, our budget. And what I'm saying is that, you know, we can find out what each of the different departments or divisions are spending and the FTEs per that. But based on conversations with our stakeholders, and particularly the board, we realize that this isn't always the most efficient way to, to organize or to make decisions about where, where we should be funding our budget into different areas of need. Next slide. So one of, one of the things that we're doing now is working on our program budget, right? So this is something that we've done in the past. Next slide. And we, we're actually producing it from 2004 through 2018, 18 was the last one. We got away from that. It was actually a requirement from ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, that we had to organize our budget by program. I don't know the exact reason, but I, I think it might have been staffing or, you know, it, it, it costs money and it costs time to do the program budget. But after reflection and after these last two budget cycles, we realized that not only is it beneficial for our stakeholders, but it's more transparent too, I think. When we look at what we're spending on a program level budget. So for instance, some of the programs we might end up having in this program budget would be summer school. We might look at security, things that we can kind of drill down to and get the numbers to the public. But they're not readily available. By doing it this way as a program setup, it'll be readily available. This first year, it's not going to be as beneficial for us for decision-making processes, but over the course of the years, just like any budget, what we're going to build is our, what we spent for these particular programs, actually what we budgeted, what the budget to actual is. So as the years go on, we'll, we'll get more benefit from looking at it in this manner. Of course, we're still going to do the organizational budget and the category budget as well, too. But this will just be another resource to see how we allocate our funds. Next slide. So just to give you an idea of, you know, what, what we're, what we're working on and what you're going to be seeing in the future. It's going to be similar to how we do it organizationally. There is going to be a narrative page that's going to describe, right now it describes what's going on in each of the different divisions and departments. Now it'll talk about what that program, the purpose of the program, the mission of the program. And then it's going to look at the summary of the funding by object of expenditures, similar to what we do now, too, salaries and wages, contractual services. And we're also going to let you see how many FTEs are allocated to that particular program. Next slide. One of the key components is determining what those inventory of programs is going to be. We're, we're, we're really being strategic about this because what you don't want to do, it's not going to help us much if we have a program and then it's gone the next year. So we're looking for, you know, ways that we can delineate by programs that are going to be, you know, be long-term. So we can, as I mentioned before, we're looking at the data on a year-year basis, it's going to mean something. So once we determine what that program inventory is, then, then we're going to create this program budget. We're going to have a draft of it, you know, for, to, maybe at our next Fiscal Management Meeting to see what that's going to look like. And then at the superintendent's budget, we're going to be able to show what that looks like in total. Next slide. The main thing is that it is going to tie to the operating budget. So one of the things that, you know, we were saying is that we're waiting, this year we were waiting for the operating budget to complete because, you know, obviously you can't like double count things and you can not take into account certain things. So we, we base it on what that total, that bottom line number is for the operating budget, and that same bottom line is going to be the, the end of the program budget. But we did want to stress, this is a system-wide project. Even though it's called program budget, it doesn't reside just in budget. Like everything we do, we're reaching out to the different departments and divisions as well as all our stakeholders to let them know that this is, you know, this is something that's not just coming out of budget, it's, it's a system-wide effort. And also too, the, you know, the way this came about, actually, I think we were talking about this before, the results of the anti-racist system audit. But that actually did propose that one way to equitable, to look at to make sure we're, as a tool to that, make sure that we're equitably allocating resources is to, you know, embark on a program budget as well as student-based budgeting, which we'll, we'll discuss in the future as well, too. And again, this is going to provide more transparency to our stakeholders and the community. Next slide. Through a loud app at you at once there, but I wanted to open up for any questions on this, the process of the actual budget development.
Hey, looking to my colleagues, Ms. Mandrowski.
Yeah, I have a question about the whole program budget thing. First, I want to say, I know that this is a unexpected summertime meeting. I do feel like this conversation needs to be taken forward to the full board because this is a very important change in the way we're looking at doing things. Program budget, you mentioned that you are picking which programs you're going to be incorporating into your program budget. I would like to know, number one, why we would be doing that instead of reporting on all program budgets? And number two, I want to clarify that it will include incorporate actual dollar amounts and not just FTEs and things like that, because when I receive our regular budget, I don't feel like I really get a good handle on how much money we're actually spending in each category and each, on each thing versus just such a broad, you know, three FTEs and things like that, which by the way is full-time employees.
Right, that's a great point. So when it comes to determining which programs, and I agree, if we had the the ability to do it on a, every, you know, on a, every program that we do, which is hundreds, it, it would be kind of hard to maintain that. I don't know if we have the staff to do it in that much detail. To give you an idea, Ms. Mandrowski, the last time we did it in 2018, we had eighty-five different, unique programs. And I'm saying unique, but some of them were combinations of things. So, so in other words, if we, if we say that we're going to look at a program aligned with math and literacy, within that math and literacy, we might have fifteen to twenty separate subprograms. The idea is that that would be represented in the narrative where we can kind of dig into more detail. But if we were going to have, you know, every, every program without a minimum threshold, I, I just think, I don't know if we'd have the ability to do that and to do it on a year-to-year basis to keep up with that. I'm, I'm saying that now, but I mean, who knows, in the future, maybe we can look about breaking that out into further detail. And then you had a great point too about actuals. So, so I was saying before, like where it really is going to be beneficial is if we had technically, what they recommend for any budget is you want two years of actuals with three years of budget. So in other words, we go back to two years, you know, the current year budget as well as two years before that, but accompany that with two years of actual. Now, this initial budget that we're talking about at the time of superintendent's budget, it might just be a budget at this point, and then next year roll into the actuals. But again, it's depends, it's, it's going to be a time constraint. If we can backtrack and, and put in the actuals from FY23, I know that would be beneficial. I just don't know if we have the capability to do that. I think it's going to be something that we're going to expand upon as we go forward.
So just to, so we don't actually keep track of how much money we spend on every program in every single building?
No, we do, but we don't, we don't have, right now, we don't have a mechanism to, you know, pull that up. Because, because the idea of the program is we're, we're basically allocating people. So right now, if somebody's in a particular, in the organizational chart, if somebody's under a particular division, you're going to see that person as one FTE. That person alone might be responsible for four different, or might be using time towards four different programs. So it's a little bit of a manual process. One of the good things about our new ERP system that, that went live a year, a year and a half ago, we do have a program component in there. Now, we, we haven't necessarily used that for this purpose. We've used it to some extent. But my, my, my vision is that eventually we're going to be using these programs within the, within the ERP system itself. So it's not going to be as manual. So in the future, as, as this builds, we're going to be able to click a button and say, you know, we, I want this sorted by program, instead of I want this sorted by, by organization or division. I'm, I'm just, it's going to take a little bit of time to get to that point. But, but to your point, like, you know, we, we found that when we were going through the budget work sessions, right? Like when we, when the board wanted to find out what are we spending on math and literacy, we actually had to go and, and, you know, figure that out. It's, it's not necessarily coming out of our system directly. That is the goal in the future.
And can I just add to the, sorry, just a point of clarification. It is going to capture every dollar and every FTE in, in the budget in the system. It's just a matter of what level of detail are you going down to? So are we doing, you know, mathematics, or are we going to go out and, and try to capture each intervention that's happening at every school, which obviously isn't realistic? And so it, it will be fully encompassing. We'll have the same dollar amounts and FTEs as the budget that we submit to the state. It just is going to be broken down based on how the dollars are used as opposed to where they sit in the organizational structure.
Okay, I don't, I'm not trying to harp on this, and I see Grace has her hand up too, so I'll let it go. But I just, I don't understand how we are able to determine whether or not we are spending resources equitably amongst our schools if we don't actually have any way of tracking how much we're spending on resources in our schools.
And to speak to that topic, we will be talking about, that's the last topic on, on the agenda here, that that is something that the states, you know, finally kind of laying down the law on that, they do want it not only budget but actual by school. So that, that's kind of the last topic that we'll be discussing, but that is where we're heading.
Okay.
Ms. Rivera Oven.
Thank you. Now, just following along the same lines as Mrs. Mandrowski, I'm, I'm trying to understand how I guess this is my, 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 my first time doing this. And I'm trying to understand how does the anti-racist races audit applies to how we're doing the each program designated by the components? Because you had like three different ways, right? Three different components. How does the anti-racist audit apply to each of those components? In order to look at if we are doing an equitable way in dividing, you know, the goods among the schools, like Ms. Mandrowski said, like, you know, how do we know exactly how much each school is getting? I know you said we're going to get to it later, but how different is that from what, the way we were doing it?
So, so for the school, the school funding, you know, we, we allocate resources and staffing to each school. It's not necessarily that apparent when we look at our, at our budget. So that is another improvement that's going to be made. To your point, Ms. Rivera Oven. But we also have, and we'll clarify this in a little bit, too, we're going to talk about the independent activity funds. So that's a separate revenue source for schools. So when we talk about, you know, how much school funding does a school get? It's what their allocation is from our operating budget as well as the total of their independent activity funds. Based on recent accounting rules, we used to actually show that as a separate fund. But that's actually gets rolled into the operating fund. Now where we, you will see that it's part of our September, I think it's September or November Fiscal Management Committee meeting. Ms. Burke Strasser is going to do a line-by-line or school-by-school detail of what, what each school does have in their independent activity funds. So that's an opportunity that you'll be able to review that as well, too. So yeah, all these different ways that we kind of manipulate or, or put the budget in different various forms are, are just better tools to help us understand. Put the budget in different various forms are are just better tools to help us understand it, looking at from different perspectives. So um. I'm looking forward to, you know, the next year, so.
And so just, oh, I say, Mr. Clausen, I see your hand.
I just wanted to invite Rob to maybe speak also about what. Dan Kelly and his team does in terms of the annual ESSA reporting by school. So we are showing what we spend by school by. Uh cost per student. Rob, do you want to expand on that?
Yeah, so we have a little bit of a a head start on this school reporting of. This, this has been done uh manually. Again, like I said, the goal is going to be eventually to do it within our system because. We actually do have a a part, a piece of our chart of accounts that's dedicated to school. So I mean. It's just a question of, you know, kind of developing this, so it's going to be more automatic. But uh what Mr. Clausy is talking about is we do on the Maryland School Report. Um and I think this is four years old now. We do go through and we uh determine what is, what amount is spent on a school level. And that's that's out there uh for the public on the Maryland School Report. It's one of the uh, you know, one of the dropdown boxes on funding, and that's separated by state funding. Uh local funding and federal funding. So that that's a resource that uh we can go to now to to kind of just see what, you know, what's being spent. Uh uh at each school on a on a student by student level because it's based on enrollment as well too. Uh but but I, but the and and I can start talking about it now, but the new budgeting, budgeting, reporting uh requirement that the the states uh. Kind of saying that we're going to do is basically do that, what we were doing manually. A few times a year. So they're going to want to see it, uh what what's budgeted per school, what the actual spend per school is. And the reason why they're doing this because it's part of the new uh uh. Uh blueprint uh accountability board. Uh they want to make sure that that's seen too, and they want to make sure that we're spending. Seventy percent of uh blueprint funding um at each school as well too. So on a on a. Program basis within the uh blueprint. So I I had mentioned uh programs too, so we're still, we're still defining what those programs are going to be. Uh but one of the things that's going to uh kill two birds with one stone is that a lot of our blueprint re- uh reporting will be programs. So that's something that we're going to have to do for blueprint is report on a blueprint program basis. We'll we'll have that accomplished as we go through this process too, because those will be uh distinct programs within our program budget.
Yep, um question, I guess, for me then, is as we're talking about. All the different programs and ways that we reflect where the money we're spending is actually going. And uh Mr. Riley, you talked about, you know, if you have um a. You know, you look at things through a, through a lens of of mathematics. And then look at any given school might have multiple, multiple different programs that are that are working. Depending on the needs of the students and the courses that are offered and that kind of thing. And one of the, as I just think about how we can better marry the work we already do. With increasing the transparency that that people want to see so that they can better understand. Where we're spending money and why we're spending it the way we do. I think, you know, is looking at our our schools at a glance. Because our schools at a glance, one of the things it does is it lays out the programs at a school. And it also uh lays out the number of staff at a school. And is, I mean, and. Which does not tell you exactly how much money you're spending out of school because we know. Salaries and benefits per employee differ for a lot of reasons, including length of time of service. But, you know, that is a report that we recreate annually. Um I'm not sure at if that is a report that recreate based on that September thirty date to report our enrollment. To the state because. Enrollment in a school is fluid through the year, and that means sometimes staffing allocations are fluid through the year. But again, it is a report that we create that does provide a level of information that that community members might. Find helpful. And it, is there a way to, or does the the new structure that you're talking about? Or, you know, looking at our our, you know, reporting not only by um, you know, you know, chapter and, you know. Category, but also by program. Would it build off of the things that we already do, like those schools at a glance reports?
No, that that's a, that's a good point, Ms. Harris. That is another resource, uh because they do talk about in that schools at a glance, we are talking about uh. Some financial aspects as well too. Um. So yeah, what, how we incorporate that or how we kind of connect those two, you know, we'll look into it in the future as well to, to make sure we. You know, we want to be as transparent as possible, right? That's the point, that, you know, whatever tools we can give to the uh to the public and our stakeholders, it's going to be. Uh to our advantage and to their advantage. Ms. Brunt.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't know how to put my hand up um on the computer, but um. To that point, that, you know, that's part of where I was trying to go with the whole. Like actual dollars as opposed to FTEs because, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about for years, one of the things. The anti racist audit came out, you know, emphasized is the fact that. You know, when we talk about having our best um and strongest teachers, uh most effective teachers. In our highest need schools. I think looking at the teacher salaries is one way of sort of um measuring that in terms of. So it might look great to say we've got ten teachers, you know, hundred teachers at this school and. And only eighty teachers at that school, but if they're all new teachers, we're not providing the most highly um. Well, experienced, I'm not going to say the the best because some of our newest absolutely can be our best, but um. But just in measuring how much money we're spending in each school, I don't ever feel like we've taken that into consideration. Or measured it in any sort of way, and I would like to see that very much.
Yeah, it's an interesting point because from a dollar's perspective, as you noted, we can kind of say this is what we're spending in salary. Uh but to kind of marry that with the uh the experience of the teachers in that school, um. It it might be a little more difficult to do from a a budget perspective, but 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 I I know what you're saying.
And just one last thing, and this may. Only tangentially get to what we're talking about right now, but I know I read somewhere fairly recently. Some schools talking about the percentage of their staff that they're retaining. Year to year, which is a a measure of a lot of things, you know, a a staff member. Can decide to stay at a school or move on to a different thing for lots and lots of reasons, but we tend to think of. Staff retention year to year as a sign of a strong school. And I don't know if, I mean, if there's, if there's any way that we capture that. It would be only an artifact of how much money is being spent at a given school because you would think generally. As teachers are retained, they are accumulating time and service, which means they're climbing the salary ladder and steps. But um anyway, just a thought, because that is one thing that people tend to think about is that. There's more. Mobility of staff at our higher need schools. Mr. Hall, I see your hand.
All right, there we go. So appreciate the questions. Um certainly something that we can continue to refine and look at. I did just want to note, um our new uh chief of HR shared with me just uh last week, I believe. That in our high impacted schools, so we're looking at schools with uh farms rate of forty percent or higher. The retention rate was ninety eight percent. So uh very.
I don't know if Brian's still talking, but I can't hear him. I don't know if anyone else can.
No, I lost the audio.
Okay.
I lost the video. Oh, there he is.
Sorry, did you catch that? My internet?
No.
So.
Last bit.
Um overall, district wide retention, teacher retention rate ninety five percent at our high impacted schools, ninety eight percent. Uh both, you know, uh or at least the the district wide one is one of the highest in the state, and I have to assume that um since we're even higher in high impact schools. That would rank very well amongst other Maryland districts as well.
Yeah, okay. And I think that's what I was. In my memory, I remember that whatever your, that report is what I'm remembering. And I guess the last question I have, and this just goes to. Um more the nuts and bolts about the the streams, the funding streams that come into any given school. Um and I don't know, and I I know our schools at a glance certainly does not go to this level of depth. But one of the things that we see, so we've got forty elementary schools that are focused, and we have five middle schools that are folk, no, I'm sorry, title one. Forty elementary schools that are title one, five middle schools that are title one. And so that federal funding. Um comes in to those schools, that's a bump. And I believe there is some level of autonomy. For, you know, administrators in those schools to decide how that funding is going to be directed, but I don't know how we track that school to school. So we've got all the forty title one elementary, the five title one middle, how we look at um. How the the extra funding bump is being allocated in those schools and what impacts we're seeing as we do our monitoring and evaluation. Um and again, that might go further than this budgeting conversation into program evaluation, but. Um again, that does get to the level of transparency that I think people want to see, and it also gets to. The ongoing reality that every single school in this very large school system is different from every other school. And it's also different from itself year to year. Um and so that level of flexibility and autonomy is a good thing in a lot of ways, but. Um it also makes it a little bit difficult to assess school to school. What that that uh title one bump is is doing to serve the students and families in that school. Okay, um anything else before we move on to our um. Next agenda item, which is our financial monitoring and our interim reports. And this is one thing that struck me during some of the difficult conversations we were having. Around the operating budget with the county council and the council members, especially newer council members struggling. To look at. The information M C P S was sharing about its budget and the level of detail. That was presented there as compared to some of the other government agencies whose budgets those council members were also looking at. And one of my thoughts at the time was. Most constructive thing from my perspective would be to look at what we're already presenting and identifying what there is. Inadequate or not providing a level of detail and transparency that the council members wanted and move forward from that place. Instead of um. Thinking that we have to do everything in a new and different way. Um because I do think, as I've said it in many places, I think we have a very talented budget and finance staff. Who create a lot of information and a lot of reports on a regular basis and um. You know, springboarding off what we already do. Could provide some efficiencies. So um moving on to our financial monitoring and our interim reports. And by the way. I love our monthly financial report. That's one of my, I regularly dig down into that and find it very, very helpful and useful.
Thanks, Ms. Harris. And uh, you know, talking about uh modifying, I I'm all for that too. If there's some things that are in that monthly financial report that. You know, aren't being fully fully utilized, maybe we take them out, maybe we add something that's going to be more beneficial. To the board, and this also remember goes to the council as well too, like you were saying, for transparency too. Interestingly enough, um. Uh you know, this this last uh uh budget season, the county office of inspector general um. Uh increased their staff and they're going to be uh, it's going to be a little more focus on um. Montgomery County Public Schools, being that it is the largest budget that that we've ever had. Um I I was looking through the inventory of uh previous reports and about ten years ago. Uh the off, it was one of the first office of inspector general reports, and it said, it looked at our monthly financial reporting. It said, uh, hey, this is okay, but we believe you can make this better by um. Uh including actual data, which we do in in some of those attachments. Also include information about the employee benefit fund. And how, where we're seeing other funds. So I I guess my point is that we are kind of looking at this as that. You know, nothing's really set in stone, even though we might have been doing something for ten years. Um I I'm certainly open to ways that we can make it more transparent, make it more user friendly. So uh. So the the PowerPoint we're looking for is financial monitoring, I think it's called. Thank you. And uh next slide. Uh next slide, please. Um so we we had mentioned earlier that uh according to Maryland law, we got to do our budget according to state budget categories. Um that is how we do our uh monthly financial reporting. This is another area too where our upgrade to our ERP system. Uh that went live, uh you know, uh year and a half or about two years ago. Uh it it makes it more efficient. So we send the budget out to the different departments and divisions, and they're responsible for coming up with their projections on where they are between budget and actual. Because it's one thing to create a budget and a plan, right? The next step uh is to make sure, are we sticking within that plan? Are there areas where we have to overspend? Are there areas where we're underspending that can be uh realigned in 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 the future? Uh so we do this by state budget categories, and the process is the the departments and divisions send it on a monthly basis. Uh to the budget specialist in the budget office here, and they're kind of looking at that together to say, other projections that we're making. In each of the different departments and divisions uh realistic, you know, what is it based on? We're documenting that and then we're um. Having conversations to see is that, you know, is that what uh where we're at right now? And I I'm saying every month, we actually start on September thirtieth because we wait till staff's hired. Otherwise, it's uh. You know, it's hard to make projections when we don't have, we don't, you know, when everybody's not hired and in place. So. We wait till September thirtieth for the first first meeting, but then that goes on on a monthly basis. Next slide. Um and yet, because we're waiting for school positions to be filled. Um next slide. Uh so then, yeah, we're reviewing current balances, we're looking at encumbrances, we're looking at payroll, you know, all the things that hit the actuals. Uh the budget specialists are looking in conjunction with uh uh chiefs, associates, directors, as well as uh. You know, we bring it to uh executive staff as well, including superintendent. Next slide. Um and then this is what we base, as Ms. Harris was mentioned, what what the outcome of this is our uh monthly financial report. And this is where we start looking at where we think we're going to end, not only on a category level, but on a system level at the year end, right? So this is also where in the in the past, we've been looking at this and. Uh as as you guys recall, and we used to have a funding source of about twenty five million dollars a year. This is where we would look, do we have those savings to do that, to make sure that we can kind of fund the budget for the next year? Now that part of the equation is gone. Based on this year's budget discussions, we will not have a fund balance. So this, the exercise here is going to be. What's that, you know, what's left, what's left on the table after our projections, just to kind of get through the year. Um so it it hasn't been determined, you know, what and what we call this is our unassigned fund balance. Uh the 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 amount that we were saving for the next year, that was our assigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is what's left. Um so we still have to determine what's a comfortable level, um because the county said as long as you're above zero, but. You know, obviously on a three point two billion dollar budget, um you know, even getting it to within, in my mind, ten million dollars is very. You know, very good. And I think we run a tight ship here, but we're going to have to see, you know, what's a comfortable level. You know, that we want to be at for our unassigned balance. Again, a lot of these things are projections during the year, so we don't really. Know for sure. We just make, we don't know when inflation is going to end up at the year end. So we're making uh uh. Like I said, assumptions and projections to the best of our ability, but this, this is what's involved in the financial monitoring process. Next slide. Um and I just wanted to bring attention, as Ms. Harris mentioned, it's the, it's about a four or five page report, but it also includes uh multiple attachments and. Some of them are are some of the data that we're looking at. So there's a a budget to actual report. Um there's a year to year report to see what we spent in these different categories from one year to the next, all all different budgeting tools that we can use that's available. Um if, you know, we we can, we can reexamine it. There's some that we don't feel are are beneficial to our, to the stakeholders. Um. We know, we can change them, we can add to this, so uh that, but this is uh our monthly um financial um. Monitoring process and and, you know, and when I came here, I I know Mr. Hall said it too, when I came here from another district. This was well beyond that, what I was used to. I mean, the the detail that we get into and that, and how we look at the different categories and and, you know, utilize. Uh the strengths of the different division chiefs and associates for projecting, I I think uh we do a great job in this area. Uh and a testament to that is the fact that, you know, we, well, we've never been negative at year end and we, you know, we've been able to meet. And a testament to that is the fact that, you know, we, while we've never been negative at year end and we, you know, we've been able to meet our our savings targets. So I I feel that this financial monitoring part and it part of the budget to financial reporting cycle is key. Next slide. And that, that these are the different reports, our revenue, and we talk about revenue as well, too. Our our revenue, we're a little different than, you know, private industry because our revenues, once we are budget set, we have a little small amount of miscellaneous revenue that we that we have. But for the most part, it's appropriations from the state, local and federal. So we we kind of have an idea of what our revenue is, it's the expenditures that that are the main focus of this process. Next slide. And it also includes the E B P fund there. I think this is, just going over the reports again, next slide. And just to give you a little more background on the amounts that we've saved. So it's been three million to forty-four million dollars. And then the most recent one was thirty-five million dollars at the end of F Y twenty-two that helped fund our F Y twenty-three budget. We do have twenty-five million dollars that's in our F Y twenty-four budget. But as as mentioned, there won't be any savings or amounts in the F Y twenty-five budget. I, I, you know, it's, I kind of equate it to kind of working or or going into the year without a savings account, basically. Because even though fund balance doesn't exactly total our cash flow, it is correlated. So we are going to be working with less available funds basically throughout next year. So next slide. So I just want to open it up for discussion for the financial monitoring process.
So I'll ask my colleagues first, Mr. Rivera Oven.
I'm just taking a line, I'm trying to do the time, the timeline, how all this flows. I got the first part, like we get the first report by September, right?
That's correct.
So for me, it's kind of like, where, when you do the projections, when are we going to have a not an accurate idea, but at least an idea of how things are going to be looking?
So so they're going to develop and get, you know, the idea is they're going to get more accurate as time goes on. So the last one we do is in April, which is past us, right? And that's where we see where we are at, at a categorical level. By state law, again, we're not allowed to be negative in any one category. So the final process, which we'll see in August, we'll bring this to the board in August, our our categorical transfers, we call it. This is where, you know, if we are negative in some areas, we have to shift our budget to make sure that they're, that we're not negative. And the good thing is the county allows us to do this as at one time at the end of the year. There are some L E As that are doing this, you know, multiple times during the year. The county, and I I think it's a testament to our monthly reporting process, that they do have accurate information. One of the reasons why Comar kind of said, hey, you know, anytime you do a categorical transfer, you should go to your county council. Because counties weren't getting information till the very end. And, you know, they they wanted to make sure that counties were aware if there was a situation in any of these categories or in general, in total, if you're, you know, losing money or you're you're anticipating you're going to have a negative fund balance at the end. So we we are allowed to do it at the end of the year. So you'll see that in in August, Mr. Rivera Oven, the the final, the final, what everything looked at at the end. And then then you'll see it in the financial report. So that's the next section that that we'll go through.
Yeah, and I have to say, and I probably, Mr. Riley drove you a little crazy this year. Because I started looking at our monthly financial reports in January and looking at the projections. And at that point, we were looking at some possibly concerning issues, especially with some of our retiree benefit funds. And so I started to ask about those at the board table, just to get a sense of what factors were influencing the the possible projections. And but I, but I, as I said, I do really appreciate the these monthly reports that come in the depth that they come in to allow us to ask those kinds of questions as we're looking at projections going forward. And then we can see month to month, as we did this year, how those projections are evolving. And how we're, how we are adapting to that. As you said, state law requires we cannot go negative in any of those fourteen categories of expenses. And so I guess my question, it kind of gets to, we talked a lot about fund balance. So for the, you know, millions of uninitiated viewers watching us right now, when we talk about fund balance, that's not just, we didn't just start making money. Or, you know, we don't have a drawer somewhere that somebody's sticking cash in. So exactly what is that fund balance and what are the factors that lead to? So and you're saying going forward, and I was at the council hearings when they were talking about this, we're we're not going to be looking to have a, you know, a, an end of your fund balance. So where does that money come from when we do have a fund balance? And going forward, what is the change in practice that is going to say it, that is going to result in us not having that anymore?
Yeah, that's a good point. So one of the largest pieces of our funding balance is our, we call laps and turnover. So this represents, you know, if we have vacancies or if we fill those vacancies, more often than not, we're going to fill them at somebody at a a lower salary level. And then that, that's one piece. The other piece is that the time it takes when we do have somebody that's retired or or leaves, the time it takes to fill that position. So that's the lapse. The turnover represents the 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 point that a new person is going to come in on that salary scale. So that is one of the and that that's an estimate, too. Like, like a lot of these things, we're estimating that. So that's one piece of where we might have fund balance. Another piece is, last year, at the end of the year, we were fortunate enough to recoup a lot of FEMA revenue. So FEMA, at first, FEMA wasn't available during COVID. And we were spending ESER dollars, you know, for that, to to do testing and stuff like that. Once that became available, that we were allowed to use FEMA reimbursements, we were very aggressive and diligent about making sure we got that. So that's something that could, a change that might be unforeseen till the end of the year. But those, those are some examples of where, you know, you might generate fund balance. Another thing, too, that we did, we actually did it the last two years now, is because of the situation we were in with balancing the budget and having to create these savings, we actually closed the books early. We did it. You know, when we, when we put that out, we said, you know, we didn't want to affect school spending or anything to do with schools. So, so but that did generate some savings as well, too, to help towards the year year-end fund balance. So that's another area that we were able to save. I mean, but in no way, I mean, I mean, I think there was some myths out there that at one point we stopped hiring because we're trying to generate, but that never is the case. We do not ever intentionally stop hiring, you know, to to gain a fund balance.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Yeah, so unfortunately for me personally, I've never really found the financial, monthly financial monitoring things, especially the script in their in their totals. And so my question's often been, I get mixed answers from M C P S as to whether or not we use open data like, like the county does. I frequently am told that we do, but, you know, not that I ever have any interest in knowing how much money we specifically spend on pencils, for example. But I'd like to be able to know that if I did want to know that, there's a way I could go in and look. Do we, do we use open data or do we not?
Mr. Clausen, I don't know if you're still there, but but we do use it. But but to your point, Ms. Mandrowski, we don't, you know, we do it, I think we do it at an object level, Tom. Or we might not be able to drill down to those particular amounts. And the other thing, too, is it's because it's using actuals, we're we're always a year behind on that. So in a current year, you know, you know, we can do that, we can generate that amount, but it's not readily available, you know, on a current year basis.
So if I could add to what Rob just went over, Montgomery County government actually took the lead in setting up its own open data portal. They spent a large amount of money to establish that portal. And it does provide your, the public's ability to go into a, let's say, the council office and pull up basically the council office's budget by by types of spending. M C P S, seeing that the county government had did, did, had done that, we went ahead on our own and established using in-house resources, our own version of of the open data portal. It is not as fancy, I'll say, as and and with bells and whistles and and colorful pages as what the county government provides. But we spent, I'll say, a tenth or a a fiftieth of what the county government spent to establish their open data portal. So our open data portal basically has our twelve hundred or so individual budget accounts that make up the operating budget. So you could go into, for example, the immediate office of the Associate Superintendent of Finance and see how much is spent on salaries, on contracts, on various things like that. So we do have a version, and in fact, my understanding is we have a meeting coming up with our Office of Strategic Initiatives to look at a new dashboard that will improve upon the open data portal that we established back when the county established theirs.
So I've been told by county folks at different levels, all the way back from Ike's administration and whatever, that Montgomery County would help us utilize their open data system. And my impression was is basically for free, shy of maybe the time that the person would, you know, whoever would help us. Is that something we could look into before we start spending more millions of dollars on things that are going to take seven or eight years for us to be able to put together to work?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, that they're willing to kind of let us use that system. I I don't see anything wrong with that. Especially if it's savings. You know, if it's, if it's savings for them that we can kind of go on it, but we do have to look at our our costs, too, to like, like we'll be talking about, about the state budgeting requirements. We really want to get it so it's not like too oppressive on our staff for time. Like, I don't want to, we don't want to have people that their only job is to, you know, gather data and put it on there. But we can do it like in a coordination with the county or with other partners where it's not as labor intensive. I'm all for that. That's a good idea.
I was gonna say, because even if we did have to assign one person fiscally, from what I've seen over ten, more than ten years, that would be way more financially responsible, fiscally responsible than purchasing another system or even in addition to another one of our systems.
And and just to clarify, you know, what we're, what we've been talking with Ms. Sharon Sharon about is them building one in-house. They think that they've got the capacity to build something that'll work better than what we're currently utilizing. But we can certainly talk to the county, too, and see if there's any possibilities there.
Yeah, like a budget dashboard right on our site.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, I think we would move on to agenda items five and five point one are end-of-year projections.
Really, I think we got a PowerPoint that says end of year. Yep, good. So this, so that when we talk about the end of year projection, it's kind of like the, next slide, please. There's a few different things I wanted to mention here. It's kind of the culmination of our financial monitoring process. But when we talk about financial projections, we're also looking at other tools that we use, too. So this, the finance, end-of-year financial projections and our end-of-year actuals is what feeds into our annual comprehensive financial report. And and this is, this takes the work of our financial services division and our controller division. This is where we look at, you know, where do we stand on an actual level? And it includes a lot of accounting concepts such as our accounts payable or accounts receivable. It also looks at encumbrances, which which are P Os that roll from one year to the next. So when we're looking at, so it's a lot involved. So when we, when the Office of Finance goes through our end-of-year process, it it really takes all of our, all of our folks to kind of make sure that we're taking into account everything. Because these, these annual financial reports are going to be audited by the auditors to make sure that we, you know, have have trends, not only transparent, but accurate and reliable financial statements that take the the actuals and in addition to the budget. So that that's the, our end-of-year financial projections, how that rolls into our end-of-year financial reporting. Next slide. So in this, in this year, what you're going to see, when we do that categorical transfers, we were over in two categories, category ten and category eleven. A lot of this has to do with heating repairs, air conditioning systems, other areas that were not anticipated at the beginning of the year. That kind of put us into a negative situation there. All the other state categories are, surpluses or break even. So as part of that year-end categorical transfer, we'll move funds that are categories that have surpluses to cover those deficits as well. And as I mentioned before, this is something that's going to go to the county council. And and we'll, we'll be bringing it to the, to the board in August. So next slide. Yeah, so on August twenty-fourth, to be specific. And then it'll go to county council. Next slide. So that that's kind of in a nutshell, our our final financial reporting for the operating budget, you know, that sequence of, you know, what what happens and what goes on there. And like I said, that's kind of the, the end of the cycle for the budget to financial reporting. So that's where we say, you know, how do we do with our our budget estimates? How do we do with our fund balance or what we used to look at the fund balance? How do we do with our unassigned fund balance? What do we have left over? Because that's got to be a positive number as well, too. The annual financial report also reports on, as I mentioned, we have ten other funds that we reported. So we're, we're gathering information from all the different funds and putting that in one place, including the Educational Foundation. They're actually a component unit of us. So if you look in our annual financial report, you'll see them as separately listed, but part of our, our reporting. Any questions on that before we go to independent activity funds?
I think my only question goes to, we keep talking about the fund balance. And, you know, the the county council had a lot of questions around why our fund balance was what it was and why did we need it? And we shouldn't have it and those sorts of things. But as we're talking about this, fund balance is is in many ways unpredictable, since so much of it comes from lapse and turnover, which is unpredictable throughout the year. And so when we say we're not going to have a fund balance anymore, I'm not exactly sure what that means in the context of the realities of funding a system of this size.
Yeah, and let me, that's a good point. Let me clarify when, I I think it is kind of was another myth. Because if somebody looks at our annual financial report, what they're going, what they're going to see when they see fund balance, it's going to say eighty-six million dollars. So before I was making the distinction between our unassigned fund balance and our assigned fund balance. So assigned fund balance is what we had been putting towards the next year's budget, right? So part of that eighty-six million dollars from the last A C F R, our annual comprehensive financial report, was that amount that was set aside. But part of that assigned fund balance is also encumbrances. And these, as I mentioned, were purchase orders that, because they span multiple years, that funding gets moved into the next year. And the way they do it from an accounting perspective is it's listed as an, as an encumbrance, which is part of our assigned fund balance. Part of that fund balance, too, that eighty-six million dollars is our inventory and stuff that that really can't be spent. But from an accounting perspective, they consider that fund balance. And another big component was that we're going to be talking about soon is our independent activity funds. And I had mentioned that in the past, we would actually have a separate fund, independent activity funds, that was treated differently. Now, and the reason why the government accounting standards decided to roll that into our operating fund is each, each district or each school district around the country had to make the determination, is this something that M C P S administers or has any control over? And since we, basically, the independent activity funds follow our financial manual, we had to make that determination that that gets put into our fund balance. But with all that said, that's sixty million, sixteen million dollars right there, too. So if somebody can go in and say, oh, they have eighty-six million dollars, what are they talking about? Really, the only thing that's available and that's going to be available in future years is our Really, the only thing that's available and that's gonna be available in future years is our unassigned fund balance. Uh so that will, we will be able to carry unassigned fund balance into the next year. Uh but I mean, you're talking about a very small percentage compared to our total uh fund balance. Uh did that, did that answer Ms. Harris on what what it's composed over?
Yeah, yeah. And I see Ms. Rivera Oven.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Um a quick question just for the for the public. Um what happens to surplus? Where does it go?
That that's a, that's a great question. So surplus, you know, is what we're talking about here is fund balance. So uh you know, it it doesn't reside in in individual departments. You know, when we we talked about different ways that we uh that we look at the budget, right? We do it by departments, by divisions, we do it by categories, by objects. Part of this end-of-year process is whatever those variances are, that drops to the bottom line. Um except for like the only way that, you know, that a an individual department or division can retain some funding would be through the uh through an encumbrance, which is a legal purchase order that spans uh a year. So it it's, in other words, our HCM project, um that's gonna be part of our encumbrances that goes into next year, because that is a multi-year project. Um but other than that, any surpluses basically fall to the bottom line. And that's a, that question comes up a lot, because people will look at and say, hey, um you know, I'm teacher salary, I'm category three. How come I can't keep that five million dollars that stayed at the end of the year and start the next year with that? Uh but but that's not the way uh, you know, it works, at at least in Maryland. You know, everybody's kind of following these same rules where um any, any budget to actual variances fall to bottom line, fall to fund balance.
I could just add to what Mr. Riley said. Um for example, as he had said earlier, thirty-five million dollars of fund balance was used to fund the FY twenty-three budget. But there was a few million dollars in excess of that thirty-five million dollars that is our starting point uh for that fiscal year. And any, any funds that are in excess of what is used to fund our next year's budget, as has been the case up through twenty twenty-three, can only be used for MCPs. So for example, during MCPs, some of that excess surplus, as you mentioned, was used to fund, I think, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar teacher pilot program, teacher choice pilot program for technology in the classroom. And so again, the county council can only apply that excess funding to MCPs.
Okay, so seeing no other questions, I think we will move on to item five point two, which is our independent activity funds. And I will just say, uh Ms. Bergstreser, I still hear from people who are talking about the presentation you made to the fiscal management committee last September about how incredibly helpful they found your description of what these things are, what funding streams go into them, the purposes for which they can be used, and who is the is the point of contact at a school to know all the things you might need to know about an independent activity fund. So anyway, you've got fans out there.
Hey, I'll just, I'll I'll just set it up. So part of our year-end closing process that we were just discussing um and and how, as we discussed, independent activity funds are, even though they get rolled into our operating budget, they are uh separate and distinct. They used to be an agency fund. Cause we wanna make sure that these are, for the most part, student funds. So we, so we keep them, you know, separately on a on a spreadsheet, on a separate, on a, on a separate system. Uh but I I'm gonna pass it over to my colleagues, uh Ms. Bergstreser and Ms. Adar, um to kind of uh walk us through that year-end process, uh which is just as important as the operating budget, because we wanna make sure that no schools end up with a negative balance or, or you know, uh just to verify what that year-end balance is. So if you guys, you guys wanna kind of jump in and kind of walk us through.
Sure. I think you had a slide.
Yep, and then next slide.
Okay, so I can just start, I can go over the um the year-end process. So every school keeps their own independent activity funds. And at the end of the year, we have to roll every individual school into the new fiscal year. So before we can do that, they have to complete all their monthly tasks and reporting. That would be closing out some field trips, fundraisers, anything that needs to get done to close out the books. Um then they prepare an annual financial report of the independent activity funds. And that gets sent to my office and my team will review that and all of the information that they have. Once we review it and everything is correct, I put it on a spreadsheet. And that is part of the presentation that I do in September, as you were talking about, Ms. Harris, about you know, what schools have and all of the different information. And that spreadsheet is then provided to Mr. Riley's office and uh the Division of Financial Services, and that goes on the annual comprehensive financial report. And again, we used to report that separately, but now that is rolled into the general report that we do. Um so yes, we roll every school over and we review all of their financial reports. And then we put that in a comprehensive spreadsheet to uh report all the financials.
I just wanted to clarify too, based on Ms. Rivera Oven's question. So these are funds that do actually stay with the schools. These don't get rolled into our fund balance, right? These, these are kept uh as they are, whatever they were at year end after they've been uh audited. And I I say audited, the our external auditors, um I didn't mention this before, but they'll do uh, they audit our operating budget every year, and they'll also pick, um I think they they've increased the number, but they'll look at like seven or eight schools individually too, to make sure that they conform to their audit standards. In addition, uh and this is in addition to the internal audits that that are going on throughout the year.
So quick question. So these would be things like um, I don't know, if they had a brownie sale or the yearbook sale or petty cash, any of those things?
That's correct. Yeah, and and so it's a, it's a separate uh uh accounting system that we use for um the independent activity funds, but yeah, they are uh separated into those uh different categories is how they do it.
Yeah, and I did just wanna acknowledge that we, you know, get regularly the audit reports for all the schools. Um and and oftentimes the follow-up, um if there are issues that require you know, retraining or reminding or whatever. Um and so that's a lot of work that goes on on a continuing basis out of that office, which is very helpful. Um and I think, and we'll talk about this again in September right now, um because people are always, I think it's the nature of the work. People are always moving through schools, right? Because that's what students do. And so there are different people uh working, you know, the boosters club, the the PTA, the SGA, the GSA, all these different clubs and things that might be doing fundraising in a school for different purposes and um also different revenue streams. And there's always some confusion about what are the sources of revenue that go into those and for what purpose can that money be spent? And what happens with money that's still there at the end of the year after all of those? You know, so that they raised money for um an after-prom party, they raised money for this, that, or the other thing. And those things come and go, and there's still money left, and then what happens? So we're looking forward, fast forwarding, coming attractions for September, but those are the kinds of questions that we routinely hear. And again, I think it's just because people are always moving through and 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 focused in on that IAF at their school for different reasons at different times. And so it's just good to see there is a book that talks about, a manual that talks about all the different steps that are, and all the different, you know, monitoring and procedures um and accounting standards that are supposed to apply to that. So anyway.
Yeah, I just wanna uh uh add on to, because that was a good point. I didn't mention the manual as part of our um tools that we use to make sure that our numbers are correct. We have, it's a, I think it's a twenty-two chapter manual that uh Ms. Adar's in charge of to making sure that's updated on a uh semi-annual basis. Um and then just to to, when we talk about independent activity funds, so as was mentioned, uh Ms. Bergstreser's office is doing the uh periodic audits of these funds. And then um if there is occasions where um you know, there's turnover at the elementary admin level, uh I rely on Ms. Adar, uh she she oversees a cadre of uh visiting bookkeepers as well as herself to make sure that people are trained. And one of the, one of the, you know, I was talking about changes that we're making some of these areas, we are, we are enhancing that training um at a school level as well as our um administrators too, to make sure that everybody's uh has the financial uh training that they need, not only at the beginning of the year, but then on a as-needed basis. Uh I I don't wanna get into a situation where somebody says, oh, I didn't know about that financial rule, because we have a lot of rules, and it's not easy just to kind of take them at all at once. So we do, uh we are uh increasing uh the opportunities for uh training throughout the year for for everybody, basically, because principals as well too, there there are the financial folks, they're responsible for their schools. So we wanna make sure that everybody has ample opportunity for training.
Yes, thank you. Um so um I think the, uh any other questions for my colleagues? Okay, so then I think we are ready to move on to the next item on our agenda. And this gets to Ester funds, which, you know, we are all watching very closely. We've been having conversations about Ester funding since early January of twenty twenty-one, making sure that we were very, very focused and intentional about how we utilize those funds, knowing that anything we invested in that needed to be retained after the Ester funding goes away is on our base budget. And uh we did end up having to shift um several, I, many more things than we wanted to from our base budget to Ester for FY twenty-four because of our budget realities. So um this just puts more pressure on us and the monitoring and evaluation piece we're doing to make sure we are tracking how well and how effective and how effectively we are spending that money and what we need to do to maintain the expenditures that will require that um after next fiscal year.
Great. Uh we have a slide for Ester. Thank you. And next slide, please. Uh so we're heading towards the home stretch here. So as Ms. Harris uh mentioned, we were very strategic on how we kind of utilize those funds. Uh also, they were required either for the safe return to schools or to mitigate learning disruption, which is what we, what we did, how we allocated those funds. One decision we made early was uh we we actually treated this as non-recurring funds. Um so when we were talking about the monthly financial report before, there's actually a separate page or section that talks to Ester, because you won't find uh the things that are in Ester in the operating budget. Uh this is just um something that we decided to do, because as mentioned, it it's technically, it's non-recurring. I mean, it it lasted a few years, but um i- in a way, I I'm, I think this is easier. It kind of uh less, I think, by doing it this way, it kind of didn't make the the that fiscal cliff as as high as it could have been. So um I think we did a great job. But although with that said, you know, in order to balance this budget, we did have some moving parts here. Uh so next slide, please. I just wanted to go through some of those. Uh so if you recall, this is some of the conversation we had when we were, when we were doing the final budget. Um we had to uh uh move some operating budgets to Ester in order to make room to to fill that eighty-eight point one uh gap that we had. Uh so that was one piece, but it's uh easier said than done. So it's one thing to move the operating budgets to Ester, but we also had to take stuff out of Ester to make that uh um have room to do that. And then there's gonna be one final piece, as Ms. Harris mentioned, we are gonna have, uh we're gonna have to determine what that's in Ester is gonna end up coming back to the operating budget. And that's gonna be part of the FY twenty-five operating budget discussion. Uh next slide. Here, here we tried to kind of visualize what those moving parts uh were. So the first, the top there, we did distinguish the operating budget from Ester, and we reported that separately on a monthly basis. Uh but then in twenty-four, so uh we just moved some operating budget expenses into Ester. And then in twenty-five, uh um based on need and and based on uh um, you know, our budget discussions, um some of that Ester is gonna come back into the operating budget. Next slide. Uh so the, these are the things that were uh shifted into Ester. And uh you know, as you look at all this stuff, none, none of this is like, uh well, not, I I wanna uh clarify, none of our budget is discretionary, but discretionary, but the items here, you know, we could say these are extremely important things. Why did we move them to Ester? Well, as mentioned before, part of the Ester requirement is that we have to make sure that uh these items were to uh mitigate learning loss and then uh help students on a social and emotional level. So that's why, you know, these items were picked to go into Ester. Um next slide. And the uh next slide shows what actually came um out of Ester, either a portion or um um in total. So so tho- those are the big buckets that were in Ester, out of Ester, and then, you know, what we're gonna have to contemplate, or what the board's gonna have to contemplate, contemplate of what's gonna come back into that operating budget. Next slide. Uh I don't know if you had any question?
I will look to my colleagues first, Ms. Rivera Oven.
No, I think we had the discussion that um how we're gonna do without those funds, that we we moved a lot of things to special funding. So then now we're gonna have to move them back. Right? So how does that? When are we gonna have a good idea of uh where, if we're gonna be in a good shape or not?
Yeah, and I, and I think to answer that, we're gonna have to look at what our, what our realistic revenue uh sources are gonna be for next year um and what our expenses are. Um so I think we made some initial projections that um starting off the year, uh we're gonna need about a hundred and forty million dollars um to, was our initial projection. That that could get refined as we determine what our true funding's gonna be. Uh but that's kind of where we're at now. But that does include uh forty million dollars of Ester uh estimating forty million of Ester coming back to the operating budget. So uh but that, that is, it's gonna be something that we're gonna be looking on, looking at, uh you know, as we move into this next year. Uh that, so that, that is, so um not that this job is easy, but it's kind of even getting harder, because not only we were talking about the absence of fund balance, but also, you know, if you recall, over the last couple of years, we were saying, hey, maybe we can move that to Ester. That that conversation can't happen anymore. We're gonna be limited to, you know, what we have in in the operating budget, so.
And I, I would just say, I mean, you say it all the time, because it's always true. But even perhaps truer this year than ever before is that, you know, that's, we start the process of drafting our FY twenty-five budget on July first, first day of FY twenty-four. And so I think it'll be something that will be looking at in greater depth as we move through the year, looking at our monitoring and our evaluation data and figuring out um all those things you just said. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, next thing we're getting to, um and this, I think, gets to a bit of the fall, I don't wanna call it fallout, but the after effects of the somewhat difficult budget cycle that we had um in our operating budget particularly this year. And getting to how we can provide the detail in the information about our the work that we do and the money that we spend to fund it and why we make those decisions. So that it's easier for our our funders, really the taxpayers, to understand. And also the council members who have to make those decisions about our budget requests. So um I'm looking forward to this.
And the last item, uh we don't have a PowerPoint on it, but uh and we've alluded to it before, but just the new budgeting uh reporting requirements that uh uh that were, you know, that we're gonna be facing with the state as a um uh part of the discussions with the blueprint and AIB. Uh so one of those things I I'd mentioned before was that we're gonna be responsible for, according to House Bill thirteen seventy, that we show that at least it's seventy-five percent of our formula funding is allocated. Uh and it's, basically, the money's gotta follow the student. So um I do have to say, uh when I'm in meetings with other CFOs, they are, uh a lot of them are struggling, because uh in order to do this, if you're getting funded at MOE, um what they're doing is they're, you know, cutting things just to make sure that they meet the seventy-five percent requirement. The other thing too, that I think puts us in a good position, uh I had mentioned before, our um updated ERP system, you know, you'll, you'll hear us refer to it as the hub. Uh so the hub does allow us to uh put this funding in different categories, um if different pieces within our chart of accounts. So we're in good shape there. I'm not saying it's easy, but I do feel like we're kind of ahead of the game when it comes to other uh uh school districts. Uh some of them are right in the process of going through an ERP update too. And part of the issue, part of the the struggle that we're having is that uh MSDE, who who who's dictating this uh requirement, in it, in addition to AIB, it's kind of a joint thing, which they, well, they got to get on the same page is is one of the things. But also, with regards to MSD, we kind of follow for our reporting, the reporting manual, that was updated in 2009, and then there were some slight revisions in 2014. But a lot of us are saying that, and it hasn't been updated since. If they want us to all be on the same page, which is usually the goal of MSDE, they have to update that reporting manual, and there's a little bit of back and forth there. Because what's going to happen is if we all do it slightly different ways to to meet these requirements, they're not going to have the ability to kind of compare, which is, you know, yeah, which is one of the goals, is that they can kind of compare how different school districts do in relation to others in different areas and different aspects of the budget and and actual finance. So I don't know if there's any questions on that. That's still, you know, a work in progress, but like I mentioned, I think we're in good shape. It's just going to be something new and and enhancement to the the processes we've been talking about, the budget to financial reporting cycle.
Any questions? So I would just say, Mr. Riley, so it's a bit up in the air with AIB that the accounting, the Accountability and Implementation Board for the Blueprint and the State Department of Education around how they want to see all of this information recorded and reported and shared. Any projections about when they might come to some agreement?
I'm thinking it's going to be sometime during the course of this year. Maybe I'm optimistic. I don't know, because others will say that they're way far away from agreeing on what those requirements are going to be. But I I'm just being prepared that it's going to be sometime this year, and I'm going to make sure that we have our reporting in place to to meet those requirements.
Okay. Okay, any questions before we move on? Okay, the last thing on our agenda today is just a quick update about the creation of the Student Climate Action Council. And I think there is a slide for that. So just, this has already been publicly shared. It was in last week's Five Things to Know. And but I did want to just give, share some appreciation for the folks inside MCPS that supported the really intense work for about two and a half, three months of creating this first-in-the-nation trailblazing Student Climate Action Council, which is going to be a body of students inside the school system that are working in an ongoing, continuous way throughout our entire school system on on climate action. And the, this all started back in February. You recall, we had some of the students from compostology once again come to public comment at a board meeting, and among other things, in addition to sharing the work and the results of their work, very impressive. They presented a budget proposal for about $160,000 to greatly enhance the number of schools actually composting. And it was a two-year budget proposal, and there was a lot of interest by the Board of Education in seeing how we could go about funding that proposal. Because it was so organically created, thoughtfully done, substantive. And there was also interest by the superintendent since we so frequently see students coming to the board with having done and doing on an ongoing basis incredibly substantive, effective work on all aspects of sustainability and showing a deep interest in helping MCPS meet our climate action goals and the county meet its climate action goals. And we have a group of those students formed up that are regularly advising and reporting to the Board of Education, to the superintendent. And so we, when the decision was made that we didn't think that the budget team in the school system would be able to fully fund the the students' budget request around composting, they decided to kind of combine the two things, the interest in providing some funding for student-based initiatives and hearing very directly and purposefully and intentionally from our student climate activists on a regular basis into creating a group of students that would have a position in the school system to do those things, help support and fund student-generated climate action and sustainability projects, and also advise in an ongoing way the school system on how to achieve our carbon-neutral, net-zero sustainability goals. And so the, we formed a steering committee that started meeting in early March with the goal of creating the bones of a student climate of of this group and getting it to the point where we could announce applications for the inaugural group of students by Earth Day at the student, at the Youth Climate Summit on April 22nd. And then we wanted to have, get all the way through the application, the review, interviewing, all the different pieces of that so that we could form up this group of students by the end of the school year so they could begin their work over the summer. And that was, I mean, it really was rather an intensive process when you think about all the moving parts to do all those things. But we did, with the help of the steering committee, which included three students who really pulled a lot of the laboring oars in the creation of the application and the drafting of the mission and vision statements. And the steering committee very, very intentionally chose the name Student Climate Action Council. And 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 the word "action" was intentional. It's not advisory or anything like that. It is action because that is the the hope. And we actually had 316 students from around the county apply for these, what were initially intended to be 12 council member positions to for each geographic area that was established. And in the final result, in the final, in the end, the these students were so incredibly impressive. And, you know, we we learned some things going through the process about, you know, how we will organize a little bit differently next year. But, you know, these students whose names you just saw on the slide, maybe you could pull it up one one time again, have already started meeting. We're going to have, they're going to have their third meeting next week. And they are a very impressive group. And if you look at this, one of the things that's impressive to me is that we initially thought, since the entire selection process was blinded, nobody reviewing applications saw name, school, grade, totally blinded. We thought, well, we would definitely, in the end, have far more rising seniors than any other group, just because seniors have done more. They're perhaps more polished writers and are able to present their ideas and their their background with clarity that maybe younger students wouldn't quite have achieved. However, if you look at that, you'll see that, and again, this was very blinded. There was no intentionality about, oh, we're going to wait your interview, that we had 316 students apply, 42 of them got through to the final round of interviews in the in the six different areas. And but nobody knew who grade, school, anything like that. And you'll see that the students that were the the 14 students that emerged out of that interview process of 42 are are well-represented grade-wise. And so we we have a lot of student energy, the very impressive group, and I'm very grateful to particularly Heather Dublinsky in the Chief Operating Officer's Office, who was very involved, and then the other members of our steering committee from the Sustainability Group, from Outdoor Education, from all different areas of the school system who work on sustainability issues writ large. And then moving forward, the will have a, the Student Climate Action Council will have a dedicated team of advisors and resource people to provide them technical support for any of the work they decide they want to do. And that will include somebody from Mr. Riley's office, because these students are going to be issuing RFPs for student proposals and will be, you know, they have a budget, they're going to be awarding grants for student-based projects. So they're going to have a financial advisor from Mr. Riley's office, they're going to have advisors from the communications team from, you know, every ass, every office in MCPS that they would need support from is going to have a dedicated advisor to this group of impressive students. But I just think this is a huge. So I mean, this is a, this is a big deal. Because as I said, we've done some looking around other school systems, even other school systems in the country that are doing very impressive, very, very aggressive sustainability work, and none of them have a group like this. So we really are kind of blazing a trail. And so my appreciation for everybody that worked to support us getting very quickly from zero to 50 and getting this group established, and as I said, they were are have already met twice, they're having their third meeting next week and are a very impressive group, and I'm sure we will be hearing a lot from them as they move forward and are, again, Student Climate Action Council members, not advisors. So anyway, I just, we just wanted to share that. So it's good news. And thanks to everybody who played a role. So is there anything else before we wrap up, conclude?
No, I just want to say along those lines, talked about, I've mentioned this before. I know, and the Sustainability Team out of, I guess, Seth's office or whatever was very interested. But, you know, there are companies that would help both with ideas, discussions, oversight, and finance, financial aspects. So my guess is we won't necessarily reach out to them, but if you wanted to, they're available. I'm sure the students would reach out to them. They are very aggressive and they're interested in building partnerships. And I will say, it was a huge, it was a huge team of people that came together to do the application review and the interviews. So we were drawing from all kinds of partner groups in the county. And they were all incredibly impressed by these students and wanted to work with them and wanted an intentional way that they could connect with and collaborate with these students. And so we've already created a database to connect students with organizations like the Sierra Club and Nature First, and but always also looking for how we can share the creation of this group with the wider community so they really can partner with these students on projects and
It just seems like the reusable energy facilities would might be a good place to start. But thank you for your work on this, and thank you all very much for your work on all of this stuff and for putting together a meeting in July. You guys have a good day.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Enjoy your summers, and I'm sure I'll be seeing you all soon.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Bye.